All right, cross order at seven o'clock. The government has pushed the back.
Let us do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first thing we have is we have a couple of presentations and some proclamations. Who are the...
We have Patty.
Patty?
Yes.
This is for the...
Constitutional Constitution Week. She is with the Daughters of the American Revolution, right?
All right, real proclamation here. Whereas on September 17th, 1787, fifty-five delegates to the Constitution Convention in Philadelphia's Independence Hall signed the United States Constitution, a document that serves as the guardian of all of our liberties. And whereas September 17th, 2017, marks the 230th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitution Convention, and whereas it is the privilege, honor, and duty of the American people to accord official recognition to this magnificent document. And whereas public law, 915, guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Dr. Markey Vargas, Mayor of the town of Lakewood Village in the state of Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by visionally protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us, reflecting on the privileges of being an American, and all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. In witness thereof, I have set my hand to the seal on this fourteenth day of September in the year 2017.
The Daughters of the American Revolution is a lineage society comprised of women who are directly descended from those who fought in or supported the American Revolution. We are dedicated to promote patriotism, historical conservation, education, and to celebrate those patriots who fought in revolutionary war. In 1956, the Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress to create Constitution Week in order to celebrate this most historic event in American history. It was approved, however, it wasn't until 2002 when President George Bush enacted Constitution Week. It is celebrated, as evidenced in this document, by September 17th. To date, the document was actually signed in 1787 through September 23rd every year. Thank you for this, Mayor. And good luck. Thank you. And I hope that all of you will join me in celebrating this most historic event in American history. Thank you.
Who am I up here?
This is Hillary with the Denton County Friends of the Family.
Okay, so this is Hillary with the Denton County Friends of the Family?
Friends of the Family.
Friends of the Family, okay. And proclamation, here we are. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's dignity, security, and humanity; and whereas domestic violence is not confined to any group, groups of people, but cuts across all economic, racial, and societal barriers; whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole here in the community throughout the United States and the world; whereas domestic violence remains a major public health, social justice, and human rights issue; and whereas more than 100 women are killed by a male partner each year in Texas, and 72,000 Texans sought services from domestic violence programs last year. Now therefore, I, Dr. Markey Vargas, Mayor of the town of Lakewood Village in the state of Texas, do hereby proclaim October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And call upon the citizens to speak out against domestic violence and actively work towards improving victim safety and hold perpetrators' domestic abuse accountable for their actions against individuals and our society as a whole. In witness thereof, I am civil to town fixed on this fourteenth day in the year 2017.
Hi, y'all. I'm Hillary from Denton County Friends of the Family. I have been at Friends of the Family for about 12 years, and I just thought I would take a couple of minutes to tell you about who we are in case you're unfamiliar with us. We are the sole provider of free services for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and stalking for all of Denton County. And we are located just up Swisher and then up 35, right next to Bill Utter Ford on the I-35 service road. We're the bright, uh, white rock building with the bright blue metal roof. If you've driven the 35, then you may have seen where we are. That is our outreach services building, and so we provide several different types of services. I feel like most of the time when I tell people I work for Denton County Friends of the Family, they say, "Oh, you're the better women's shelter." And I say, "Well, yes, but we are so much more than that. We do provide a shelter for victims who need that in a case of emergency." And we don't provide shelter for just women, but also children and men who might need it. They may be housed in different places. As you can imagine, our shelter holds about 35 women and children at a time, but it would not be ideal to enter a man into shelter who has been abused by a woman and stick him in a household full of 35 women. And if you have 35 women and kids who may have been hurt by a man, it wouldn't be ideal to enter a man into that place. And so we do often have those separated. We run at capacity 11 months of the year. And so I know that you just heard a lot of statistics kind of all at once, but there were 158 women killed by an intimate partner in Texas last year. That is way too many. And so part of what we do at Friends of the Family, my job, is I'm the Director of Prevention and Community Education and Awareness. And so we actually start talking about this with pre-K, um, with pre-K kids, not specifically. You know, we use age-appropriate education and words and things like that, but we begin to talk about safe and unsafe touch, safe and unsafe secrets with three-year-olds because we believe that if children can learn what's healthy, then they grow up to be adults who choose healthy behaviors. Other pieces of what we do at Friends of the Family is we offer free counseling, individual or group therapy to folks impacted by domestic violence. We are actually one of the largest providers of therapeutic services for children in our whole county. Lots of times people think of the Children's Advocacy Center or maybe some of the Cook's Children Places, but we actually provide more therapeutic services for kids than most folks in Denton County. We're just, I always tell people, that's one of the most unfortunate best-kept secrets of Denton County is our play therapy program for kids. We offer free counseling for kiddos starting at age three, going all the way up through their teens, and then after about 16 or 17, they can start to do talk therapy like adults, and so they would be rolled into an adult program. For the last seven years, I was also the Director of our battering intervention and prevention program, and so I really appreciated that as a town, you all included, holding perpetrators accountable as part of the proclamation. That is such an important piece of it because we know in reality that even if a relationship ends, that doesn't mean the abuse stops. And it's so important to hold perpetrators accountable, and we have a battering intervention and prevention program for perpetrators of domestic violence. It's not your six-to-eight-week anger management program. It is a 30-week in-depth program for folks who either voluntarily want to come or, you know, as you can guess, about 95% of them are court-appointed to be there. And we have that program for both men and women. And then we also have a thrift store located in Denton on 380 or University, I guess it's all the way into Denton, but it's at 1614 West University, and we take donations of clothing and furniture. And I always tell people, it's a really neat thing to do because the money made at the thrift store goes right back into Friends of the Family, which I feel like is valuable and important. But the other piece of that is that if clients come into Friends of the Family with only the clothes on their back, we can give them a gift certificate to go to the thrift store and get something that they might need. Or if you're talking about someone who maybe comes into shelter, finds safe housing, and is able to exit, but doesn't have a way to furnish their apartment, or wherever they're going, they don't even have a pot, a pan, or spatula, those things can be purchased at our thrift store. And then the last little bit of our services that I want to share is our advocacy department. We have people who can help clients get a protective order. We have folks who can go back and forth to court or the hospital with people who might need it. And so I consider Friends of the Family to have a holistic approach to domestic violence. We are able to, if you will, treat the whole family, and so we have services for the kids, services for victims, services for perpetrators. And we believe in everyone being able to receive that help and seek that help. And I also really appreciated the proclamation listing that domestic violence knows no bounds. There is not a specific race or ethnicity who are victims of domestic violence, or socioeconomic class, or age. In those 158 folks who were killed, the youngest one was 16, and the oldest one was 93. And so it does span, it stretches across the lifespan. I'll leave you with just one nugget of information, if you will, as the prevention leader in our community. I attended the Texas Council on Family Violence. They are the statewide domestic violence agency, and I attended a conference that they put on in April. And the CEO of the Texas Council on Family Violence stood up and said, "I would like to speak specifically to every person in the room who is connected to an agency that has a community education department. The youngest victim in Texas was a 16-year-old girl killed by her high school boyfriend. If you are living in a community who believes that high school is when you should start talking about dating violence, this is proof that it's too late." And that is just a philosophy that we have at Friends of the Family. We want to start talking about healthy relationships much earlier than high school so that we don't have 16-year-olds in our community that end up as one of those statistics. So thank you so much for this. It really means a lot to me that you all are willing to identify October as National Domestic Violence Month and proclaim that, and also go Purple Day. I know you'll have information about that, so wear purple on Thursday, October 19. Thanks, y'all. I forgot to tell you all, I did leave a bunch of information up here with Linda. There's brochures and stat cards and little purple lapel pins.
We're gonna be talking about tax and the budget. You should probably leave. Yeah, I don't think you're...
Thank you. Thank you again.
All right, thank you. Okay, next up, we have the visitor citizen's forum. At this time, any person with business for the council not scheduled on the agenda, they speak to the council. No formal action may be taken on these items at this meeting. All right, so normal, just to make sure everybody understands, when it comes to voter, citizen, you can say anything you want for three minutes. You can recite the Gettysburg Address if you feel like it. Any interactions with the council has to be a concise factual answer because we can't deliberate. We can't tell you opinions or what I like or what I don't like or whatever. So yes, that hole is a sewer repair. No, bulk trash isn't this week. Yes, we can get you a new garbage can. That's got to be any responses from this side of the desk. You're unlimited, we are limited, okay? So that's the way it works with voter-citizen interaction because it's not on the agenda. Okay? So having said that, Linda, do we have anyone to wish us to speak?
Mr. Gettysburg.
Dan.
Good evening, everybody. How we all doing?
Good.
Okay, we've got a few comments. Five, three minutes, basically. Uh, just how many people have lived here since 2006? So we got a lot of newcomers here to the city, right? Before I get started, I just want to give a few comments about my background so people and new people here who don't know me, haven't met me, have some idea who I am. I basically served seven years on the council here with my Vargas, Clint, and Gary, and some others. And what showed up on my doorstep this morning, or on my door, was this little piece of bullshit legislation or this little article. Did everybody get one of these today? It's one thing to circulate this among the community, but to publish it or send it out to our local cities, appoint little elves, it's kind of rash on it. I mean, I don't know what your agenda is behind this, but to me, it's unacceptable as a former councilman and citizen. So I wish, can I ask my question or not?
I wouldn't. I would.
Well, I usually don't come and speak out like this. You know, I try to get along with all our neighbors. I'm not here to stake anybody's life, challenge anybody. I appreciate your service, Dan, but two years ago, I came to your home. I asked you if you'd like to maybe consider applying and replace me for my position when I was going to sit down or step down. And I, you know, I observed you. I thought you were a stand-up guy. I thought you were, you know, worked for a corporate, a large corporation, Pepsi-Cola. Thought you walked in your dogs every day. You know, I thought you'd be a good replacement in addition to the council, but I think it was your first or second meeting after you were sworn in that I've never seen anybody alienate a fellow councilman like you did. I don't, it was your first meeting or your second meeting, when you even pluck your pug and imply that they need to have an ethics ordinance. And if I was sitting on that council, which I was not, that would be a personal offense to myself and to my colleagues. And I'm not sure why you felt so strongly that we had to have an ordinance on ethics. I know you have a background in ethics in college, and that's fine, but I'm going to give you something tonight. I should have given this to you months ago, and maybe you've taken the course. It's How to Win Friends and Influence People from Dale Carnegie.
I have, yes. I've read that.
All right? And here's a little recap, and I'll give one to the new council lady, too. This might just help you, too, as you proceed in your office. There are ways to attack problems and salute agendas without impugning a reputation of people or even insulting them, basically. And as a newcomer to a council seat, a smart person would sit there and come to several meetings over the course of the first year and observe and make notes, but not to come in on your first or second meeting and come out with something that the others would all be offended by. And you may disagree, that's fine. This is my opinion, okay?
Two more minutes, Dave.
What's that?
Two more.
Two more minutes, okay. So I'm going to give you this, too, because I'm glad Mr. Bauer was here. It's a copy of the Texas Ethics Commission violation that Mr. Bauer had. Unfortunately, he either didn't know, he was supposed to submit his proper paperwork for the election this past May, or he just blew it off and didn't think it was important. So I knowed some of the rules. I did file a violation on Paul. And basically, he admitted to violate two of their campaign statutes and their sections. And they contacted Paul, and he made good work of the paperwork. But again, that, he was a candidate you supported against a outstanding colleague who's been doing a phenomenal job for the city in this council, which was Clint Bishon. And it's one thing to vote for somebody in the privacy of your, of the voting booth, but to put a sign up for the opposition candidate against somebody like Clint who's given so much of the city in this time of service, I just can't, I don't understand that. And if you're, if you want to make friends with the other council members, why would you do that? I mean, it just, to me, doesn't make any sense. That's just my opinion, again. So I hope you take that to heart. And the other thing I did notice, you know, you come up with a lot of things that people should be doing. I looked at your records since you've been in office. What have you done? You don't have to answer that, but the voters will answer that later in next May. I looked on the project board, 34 projects. Did I see your name anywhere in there? Have you ever put up a project and offered to head it off, and head it up and run with it? You come up with ideas that other people should be doing, but you never step up to it. And I don't get it.
I disagree 100%. And we'd be more than glad to have this debate in public any time.
We need your rep.
Okay. All right. I appreciate that.
All right, well, thanks for the time. I want to get that off my chest because when you start carrying our dirty laundry to outer cities, it's going to negate our negotiation skill or ability with the other cities on certain contract agreements and that type of thing. So I encourage you not to send these type of letters by email to these other cities. None of their business. If you've got issues, you address it with your fellow councilmen or the city here locally.
We attacked, I'm a town.
Okay.
Simple as that.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate you holding your investment. I appreciate that.
You can come to my house anytime, Paul, that's fine.
Okay, um, Linda, do we have anyone else?
That's the only one.
That's it, okay. All right, then, next up, we're going to have a public hearing. Public hearing scheduled on proposed tax rate of 30 cents. Can you pull that up? Okay, so the tax rate, 30 cents, same as it was last year and the year before that and the year before. Basically, 25 cents is our standard, um, standard tax rate. Actually, have you been out to them?
Did we skip the...
We skipped here.
I think we skipped one percent. That's fine.
Okay, now I'm doing a public hearing. So a public hearing scheduled on proposed property tax rate of 30 cents D.
Okay, so you want to work mine and you want to...
I wanted to get out to the budget because the budget, if you go down a little bit, there's the, there's the effective tax rate, the rollback rate. Okay, so basically, what we're looking at is keeping the tax rate the same as it always is, keeping the same 25 cents to run the cities. It's been for 41 years. The nickel for the debt servicing. Now, one of the numbers that comes up, and this was part of the legislature, they were trying to figure out, you know, putting revenue caps in. Those revenue caps all failed. So basically, what a city can do is a city can collect 8% more money than the previous year. You can get 8% more, and at that point, that's what you get. If you go beyond 8% more, that's called a rollback rate, a more than 8% more revenue than the previous year, then the citizens can call an election. There's a certain amount of citizens we require, but basically, you can call an election and say, "We want to roll that rate, make it lower, so that you only get 8% more." So if property values went up across the board, 10% in one year, everybody went up 10, we would get 10% more if we don't change the tax rate. Or the citizens could say, "No, we want you to drop the tax rate down so that you only get 8% more." That's the rollback rate. So for us, that rollback rate is 30, according to this, it's 30.5. The rollback rate is actually for us about 44 if you include the tax. So we always keep it at 30, but... Anyway, so this rollback rate would be what it would take to where you could actually call an election. You could say, "Us, we want you to lower the tax rate down." Okay? So that's what the rollback rate is. Now for us, we charge 5 cents as a, for the bonds. We charge 5 cents. The actual rate for the bonds is 18 cents. That's what we pay, is 18 cents is what the actual amount we would pay. So another city, you would be paying 25 cents for your running the town, plus 18 more. Any other city, you'd have 43 sitting on you right now. We don't do that. That's what the 30 is. The 30 is the 25 is always, and only five. So that's, that's 30 cents that we do, okay? And the other money from the, to make the bond payment, we just make it up other places, okay? So that's what the tax rate is. Anybody have any questions about the 30-cent tax rate? It's the same as it was, you have to, year before, year before. Any, any questions from the audience? Anybody kind of follow? Okay, um, I need a, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing or the...
Tax rate, Ed's got the second, so I wasn't thinking...
I thought you had a question. I thought you had a question. You said your question.
Yeah, the second. Okay, so that ends the public hearing.
Councilman Shields, did you vote on the closing of the public hearing?
All right, now we have the consent agenda. Okay. She hiding behind her head and... All right, next we have the consent agenda. So all items on the consent agenda are considered self-explanatory and can be enacted by one motion. We have the minutes of the August 10th council meeting. Does anybody have any edits on the council meeting? Second item on there is, excuse me, a resolution setting a public hearing for Denton-St. Capitol Improvements Plan. So we're bringing back the CIAAC Committee to make some adjustments to our impact fees. And so in order to do that, there's a lot of procedural hurdles you have to do. One of the hurdles is you have to set the public hearing two months advance. So this is a, a notice saying that we're going to have a hearing two months from now. Everybody okay with that? All right. Do I have a motion?
I want to approve the consent agenda.
All right, a motion approved of the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Ed's got the second. All those in favor? All right, very good. Okay, thank you. All right, next up, now on the regular agenda. So the first item, consideration of ordinance adopting the 2017 property tax rate of 30 cents. So the way that it works is, it sounds like they do things kind of backwards, but you do the budget first, assuming a tax rate, then you approve the budget. And once you approve the budget, you go back now and approve the tax rate that you used to make the budget. That's the way you do it. So now we have to actually approve the 30 cent tax rate. That is what this ordinance says. This is the adoption of the tax rate. Any questions? Same as what's like I said.
I make a motion and we approve the 30 cents per hundred dollar valuation tax rate.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Clint has the second. All those in favor?
I'm sorry, we have to do a roll call.
Oh, okay. I want to strike you. On the tax, on the, I thought the budget was going wrong.
Both.
There you go. Thank you.
Mayor President Reed.
Hi.
Councilman Bishon.
Hi.
Councilman Lucian.
Hi.
Councilman Tantillo. Councilman Shields.
Hi.
All right. Okay. Can you hear me all? The next item is the budget ordinance. Okay, um, the budget was adopted last month. The budget is in the, in the packet, so what we have to do under Texas law is after we've adopted the budget, the next month after we do that, we have to come back and do it again. We have to revote second time to say we really meant what we voted last month and revote again. So that's what you have to do in Texas. So this is a ratification vote where basically we vote again to approve the budget. You can't amend the budget, you can't change anything. We've already approved it, so this is a revote of the budget. You have to do it twice. So Linda, take it away. So can we, can we put the budget up so at least the people can see it? It's like five sheets of it, but you can...
I think the thing that, you know, to start, I don't know if you guys can see it, but, you know, some of us voted against this because you're comparing this to June of 2017 as opposed to July, August, September being included. So when you take a look at these items, many of them are over budget. Or we don't know, let's just put it that way, because we're not given the data. So when you approve a budget, you typically would have the latest amount of data. So in this case, you would assume that August is closed. Why would we be comparing things each other? And therein is one of the problems we have.
Okay, we got, anybody?
Motion approved of the...
Well, Linda's got it.
Do you have, you said a motion.
Okay.
Okay, so I got a motion approved of the budget, and Ed's got the second. Do I have to do the roll call?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, this is the ratification, so round two.
Mayor President Reed.
Hi.
Councilman Bishon.
Hi.
Councilman Lucian.
Hi.
Councilman Tantillo.
No.
Councilman Shields.
No.
Okay. All right, next up, we have the investment policy. So on the, oh, did I miss it?
And next is the community event.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is Linda here? Oh, she made it. Okay. Okay.
She's, uh, she's came in.
Okay, all right, so, what, what's happening is, the town's 40th anniversary is this year, so the, the MDD is going to have a celebration with the town. They're spearheading our celebration, our 40th year anniversary. And Linda is the vice president of the MDD, and you're gonna give us an update, and give them an update, and...
Sure. Hi, and we decided on October 14th, at 5 o'clock, we'll have the meet brought in, we'll have a bounce house for the kids, we'll have a live band here, we'll have drinks, lemonade and water. Everybody's gonna bring a cover dish. If you have a business within the town that you'd like to promote, you're more than welcome to bring a little table out there and talk about it to the people coming in, the other villagers. We are going to invite Rocky Point, because it's part of the MDD, the water district, so they'll be invited as well. So it'll be a fun event. Everybody bring a cover dish, meet your neighbors, you know, because not everybody meets, depending where you live, you may live over the shores, you don't know the people over here, vice versa. We're gonna have tables out there. Bring your chairs, meet your neighbors, bring your cover dish, and, you know, just have fun. I mean, that's, that's all of us. So we're excited about sponsoring it. We did have a resident to give us a $300 donation. The MDD Board is going to donate the other 700, and I'm asking council if they did, or any residents, where we need another 300. So, that's where we're at tonight. The meet is going to, we're gonna get pulled pork, so we're gonna have pulled pork sandwiches for everybody. And then we're bringing the drinks, and, you know, whatever else everybody brings, but we're excited about it. You know, we did it several years ago, we did it every year, when I was on council years ago. It was a great turnout, a lot of people came, we had a live band, and, you know, just the kids were in a bounce house, and just, just have fun, just meet your neighbors, let's just kick back, and just have a little fun here. So we thought October, because cool down, number one, we know kids are playing soccer, so we thought that's probably gonna happen about 5 o'clock. So we want everybody to come. We are gonna put flyers out, and we're gonna go do a little bit with flyers. So if you have any questions, either call me, or email Linda, but we'd love to see everybody.
So everybody, so everybody knows, it's on the 14th, which is Saturday.
Yeah, it is a Saturday.
Okay, the guy that gave the money was the one that didn't fill out the paperwork right, the dumbass old man.
Thank you, Paul.
Hey, Linda, you said you were gonna invite Rocky Point. Are we inviting everybody in ETJ?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And he didn't send that email out to Rocky Point, like that struggle thing. He didn't send either.
You're, you're short about 300?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then 100, is that good? Can I show this?
So, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna, the city's, I mean, the MDD Board is, like